Okay, I'm gonna admit a couple more people. And it looks like Sandra's joining and Heather's rejoining. And Lisa, you can go ahead and begin.
I hereby call to order this committee the whole meeting. It is Monday, May 11th, 2020, and the time is 8:02. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Schneider, Fabs.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Frank Penzica.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Mark Steen.
Here.
Ellen Sternwiler.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the April 20th, 2020 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Minutes.
I move to approve the Monday, April 20, 2020, special meeting in Committee of the Whole. And I move to approve the, get the second one. The regular meeting of the Board of Education also on Monday, April 20, 2020.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? And if I miss you, I can't see everybody on the screen all at the same time, give me a shout out. Okay. If all those in favor of approving the minutes is submitted, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
The motion carries by general consent. We begin with the Facility Development Committee. I turn the meeting over to FTC Chair Ellen Sternwiler.
We are looking at summer 2020 construction. We have received the actual costs related to the construction change discussed last month to support the special education programming needs at Harper. Total cost to provide a more centralized space with a better layout to support the special education students in an air-conditioned space is gonna be $88,000. As we have 121,000 of unused contingency, we're planning to move forward using the contingency available. And I think, am I turning this over to? Who am I turning this over to?
I'm gonna turn it over to, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe.
Okay.
You can kind of.
Eleanor, Joe, or? Um, do we see Joe? Yeah.
Thanks for joining us. That's correct. I anticipated a range for this additional work somewhere in the neighborhood of 80,000 to 90,000. So, once we received all the hard numbers and vetted them, we feel it's a fair and reasonable price. And we're happy where it ended up and we're prepared to move forward. And then secondly, it's, it's nice that we have that unused contingency of $121,000 on the Harper project. So, we've decided to utilize that for the, for the cost impact. And then, secondly, update with regards to the upcoming, upcoming summer 2020 work. We have Highcrest Phase 3, we have Harper Phase 2, and we have Central. Our tentative commencement that we've landed on is Tuesday, the 26th of May after Memorial Day. So, we feel that, that's provided adequate time to, to have staff and parents and families and students and whatnot get out of the areas that we're gonna be renovating. And it also has a great positive impact from the construction side. We're actually picking up approximately three weeks to our schedule. So, our typical eight to nine week summer duration is now somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 weeks. So, that's, uh, that, that's one positive out of all this. There aren't many, but that's one. And then, we have the small project at Highcrest that we're overlapping with that has started. So, as we discussed with, I was being a little sarcastic there. But we will coordinate our access at the north end as need be with, with the Villages Project. So. That's the update for now. In the meantime, we're just preparing like we always do, expediting some middles. We're gonna start having a full-time onsite presence from our super supervision standpoint starting next week. But other than that, it's, uh, all is good from a material tracking lead time standpoint. We're also in good shape. So, there's nothing that I have been made aware of that, that we have a definite delay at this point with regards to factories shutting down or, or whatnot. So, or reduced staff at factories. So, there are a couple of things that we have flagged, but nothing, nothing firm yet. So, that's, that's all pretty good news.
Lisa.
Joe, can you just speak to worker safety? Are there contract amendments that have been put in place or kind of what's gonna happen to protect workers?
We have, we have a guideline that we've issued. The Regional Office of Education, who permits this work, also has it on file. It was amended last week in light of the update that we all received. But face coverings are required 100% of the time. We have additional portage ons, cleaning stations, things of that nature. So, we have a document that's on file that has been sent to all the contractors. And then it's our responsibility to make sure that those guidelines are being followed each and every day, which we will have onsite as well as some miscellaneous postings within the construction sites as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any other questions? Excuse me, but I think I will turn it back to Lisa.
Great, um, thank you. Next, we have. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Well, Joe.
Take care, bye bye.
Bye, Colleen.
Bye, y'all, have a good day.
Hi.
Bye.
That was their fastest in and out on record.
I know.
When they don't bring donuts, it's just not worth it anymore.
Hey, I heard, I heard that. I promise one day we'll be back to that.
Right.
I hope so. Um, next, we have School Finance Committee items. I turn the meeting over to SFC Chair John Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Fabs. All right, so we have a very full agenda, which I know a little bit about. So, I am not sure who I turned the lunch fees over because it seems like they were talking about two things. So, we got the fees and the nutrition committee reports.
So, both get to go to Ellen. Ellen's gonna give us an update on these.
When, when endowed, it's telling.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna really mostly talk about the Nutrition Committee and its impact on lunch. I think there'll be so a little more detail probably when we do the, the final wrap-up of the Strategic Plan Update, which I think is scheduled for June if we're on schedule, how it's been. But as you know, the lunch fees were not brought to the board for approval with the rest of the fees earlier in the year as we were waiting for the results from the Nutrition Committee. Obviously, our, our amount to trial was cut off a little bit with the last couple of months of school, but we were able to trial a lot of new items during the, the first part of the school year. And we talked to, we had focus groups with the cooks at all of the schools based on the new healthier menu items that we were adding. And we determined that we needed some more time for the cooks to work in the kitchens in order to prepare the new healthier menu items, to cut and chop all the fresh fruit and prepare the vegetables. And so, we are recommending that we add an extra half hour to the cook's day. We will believe that will allow us to continue with the items that we changed as part of the lunch this year. And when you look at the base of the current cost of food items and the additional labor cost, we are recommending an increase of 15 cents per day for the elementary schools in Highcrest and an additional 20 cents per day for the junior high. These increases represent between a four and 5% increase. And just as a reminder, lunch fees have not been increased since fiscal year 18. And the lunch program is a self-sustaining program. And so, the lunch fees are designed to offset costs. So, the kindergarten through sixth grade lunch fee recommendation for next year is $3.75. And for the junior high, it's $4.15. Are there any questions on that?
Erin.
This is less of a question and more of a comment. So, as my youngest is finishing up his stint in the district, I was thinking back on the literally thousands of lunches that my children have eaten over the years. Um, and was thinking about, so in the fall, no, in the summer of 2009, my soon-to-be oldest child was, was soon to be a kindergartner. And we were playing at McKenzie. And there were some older boys she kind of made friends with. And they said, are you gonna go to McKenzie? And she said, yes. And they said, the lunches there are awesome. And that started this whole train of, you know, my kids, I could count on two hands the amount of times that they've packed a lunch. And that was probably for a field trip. The lunches have been phenomenal. And I love that this district does not just rest on its laurels, but does a deep dive on nutrition. And I think this is not the first deep dive we've done on nutrition. I think they did one right before my kids started more than 10 years ago. And they have loved the lunches. And I think this is probably the only lunch that's cheaper that you could find in the Villages at Roamer Park. And that's. So, yes, um, so I just want to thank the, the continued effort on everybody's part to keep this program going because it really is fantastic.
Thank you. Yes, Mark. You are on mute.
There you go.
Yep, thanks. No, my question is really about how the cost changes and how our practices change with remote learning when we don't have kind of the, the load that we expect.
Well, the cost analysis.
Follow-up too when we get to the end, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would say when, as far as the cost analysis, I basically looked at where we were at prior to the school closing and kind of extrapolated out, assuming we had a full year. That's what the numbers were calculated using. Again, at this point, we're not sure, you know, what, what next year we'll bring. But we're kind of moving forward with what we know at this time.
And so, I guess part of the question is, you know, obviously, we continue to pay the cooks, even if the kids aren't in school, or I think so. And, but we probably don't buy all the food that we were going to buy. And then, the, the follow-up plays into that, which is that, you know, there are, you know, we are very fortunate with the community we live in, but there are people who depend on or very much appreciate having the low-cost nutritious option that we provide to their kids. And, you know, that's not something that we're able to provide, or at least, we can't provide it in the same way when we are e-learning. I am sorry, the background for all of these questions is, my assumption is that we may have to do e-learning next year and we may have to do long periods of e-learning next year. I don't know, but that's, that's the assumption. So, what I'm wondering is, when, if that happens, how are we changing the way that we provide lunches? And how does that affect our cost?
I don't think we're, go ahead, Carrie.
I'm sure you're gonna say the same thing as I. We're not yet there to be planning for what the lunch program will look like next year. We first need to decide and plan around what education will look like. But they definitely are things that we're thinking about. And for now, we do rely on our Angel Fund to supplement so that families who otherwise might be eligible for free or reduced lunch have access to nutritious foods. That same fund is helping to supplement for those in need while we are away from school. And so, families have the opportunity to request additional assistance through that fund.
And is that, sorry, Carrie, is that, so people can donate to the Angel Fund? But it's also, it can be funded by D-39, is that correct?
That is true. Most of the funding comes from donations. We just received a very generous donation from our Educational Foundation. But yes, that is true. Those donations can come from any number of sources. And they do help to fund not only lunches for those who are eligible, but also fees, any number of things that are educationally related that, that a family may need, excuse me, because of their financial situation.
And then, we also, I, I don't know, but I would presume for, for the folks who are eligible for free and reduced lunches, we get some funding from that from other government agencies, or I believe we do. Is that correct?
We get money for the milk program, which is maybe $30,000, $35,000 a year. But that's all we get as far as, as federal funding for related to the lunch program.
Okay, so I guess where I'm going is, you know, if we're saving some money on not buying food, but we have families in need, you know, I, I personally think that it's not a bad policy to take some of that money savings, put it into an Angel Fund that is helping to feed people for free and reduced lunches. Effectively, we're sort of, you know, it's, it's a different mechanism to deliver the funds, but the funds are for the same thing, which is for paying for the nutrition for kids in our district. That's how I'm thinking about it, but I'd be interested to hear what others would think.
Oh, sorry, Frank. Yeah. Um, two, two points. One, since it's a break-even program, if we're not buying food, but we're still paying for the cooks, we're actually not saving money, we're actually deficit spending for this account. So, funding the Angel Fund is, I think, a great idea for us to continue to discuss, but it doesn't actually come from savings and, and lunch because we're actually gonna be potentially losing money in, in the lunch area.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The, the second, and slightly related, and there's lots of hypothesis of what things would look like. So, there's no answer here. But is there, if, if we go into an environment where lunch programs are different, I'll just say, you know, smaller, longer, shorter, not, not available, do we have, and we also continue to have a board policy that we want to continue to pay the cooks, which is something else we'd have to consider when we know all the parameters. Do we have any flexibility in what else those cooks could do while they're being paid and potentially not cooking?
Those are all, again, really good questions that we will have to grapple with. If, if and when we know what our lunch program might look like next year, we are hopeful that we'll be able to continue to move forward with the lunch program as it's been designed and improved upon throughout this year. But we will have to be looking carefully at it. We recognize that we will have some, some challenges potentially because cafeterias are probably the most populated locations in schools for about 20 to 40 minutes, depending on how you kind of are monitoring that of each school day and their large groups gathering. And so, those are some things that as schools reopen, we will have to look at very, very carefully. And then, interest in, in purchasing those lunches is, is the other thing that we'll have to kind of grapple with.
I have one quick, short one as, while I was talking. How? I guess we could talk count without having a problem. I, I know in other places, there's discussions about children that depend on their schools for, for meals, et cetera. Do we have any children that fall into that category? What do we do about them? Do we expect that number to increase?
Yes, so we do have students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. And again, that is funded through our Angel Fund in our district because we don't participate in the National School Lunch Program.
Okay.
Those students receive lunches as funded through our Angel Fund during the regular school year.
And I will say technically, the lunch fees itself really don't actually get paid out of the Angel Fund. They just have reduced fees, so our revenue is less. It's the same effect, but.
Thank you.
All right, so Ellen has been waiting. Oh, you're on mute, Ellen.
All right. Um, two things. I had an original question, but just following along this. I would suggest, I actually like where Mark was going. And I understand what Frank was saying in terms of break-even with the, the chefs that we pay already. I would expect that we would continue paying those chefs through whatever happens, just the same as we would any of our other employees. And since that's a break-even, I mean, because it's just, you know, that, that's what we do with our employees. There, you know, Nutri-R has done a lot during this time, I've noticed. Nutri-R has come together and done a lot of, you know, they've donated masks. They've donated, you know, they've come, they've come together as a community. I don't know if it's the high school itself. Actually, teachers have been using the machines to make masks and things like that. I think it would be really neat if we, as District 39, you know, maybe came up with a program ahead of time that, I think this is a great area that we might be able to use as something that exists, you know, saying, okay, well, you know, we're at a break-even. We have these reduced lunches and we have chefs that are cooking them. And if we have a period of time that we have to go to remote learning again, we have a huge community. And probably if we have to go to extended periods of time where there are a lot of people who are unemployed or increasingly unemployed, the, there, it will grow. Where there's gonna be more people who, who need food. The, the Nutri-R Township pantry has been just really, really need donations. And there have been families packing food like in their homes. So, if we could, it's just a suggestion, if we could reach out to our families in our district, our constituents and, and ask and see, you know, even through a survey, they would be interested in, you know, in an emergency situation next time. I mean, it's just a thought, you know, if they would be okay with, with us providing, you know, some, some kind of food relief or whatever with, with, from our school. This is a charitable thing. I, I don't know, it's just a thought that we could do, that we could do something like that, that we might be able to help the community as well. It's just a thought that, you know, it's, you said it, Frank, you said it was a break-even. And, you know, maybe we might be able to use a little bit of our extra funds for the food itself. So, that was one thought. But my original question had to do with the lunch program itself. I think it's amazing right now what, what we've got going and how well the nutritional aspect of this. And I realize that this is the finance, the Finance Committee part of our meeting. But I do have one question or suggestion for future in terms of the lunch program. I had noticed that the, you know, kids go through the lines and they, the same thing happens at Nutri-R, where kids go through the line with seemingly unlimited, you know, they can go through multiple times and, and order multiple times and kind of ring up. You, you kind of don't know, parents often don't know how many times or what their kids are eating. So, they go through like the, the hot lunch line and get charged, I guess, for the $4.15 at the, you know, junior high school. And then, they tell you that they, it wasn't enough food, so they ordered twice. And so, then it's $8.30. And then, they went through the snack thing and then they bought extra, you know, whatever it was that they ordered, you know, an extra drink and an extra this. And then, and then before you know it, like you're getting, you, you know, you put $200 in an account and it's gone in like two weeks and you don't know where it goes. And I know there's a system in place where you can limit it or you can say, you know, you could tell your child, okay, you can only order, you know, X number of milks per week, like whatever it is. But, you know, at this age, it's really difficult to have to, to tell a fifth grader, you know, you can't have cookies six days a week, you know, or this or that. So, I'm wondering if we might be able to take a look at that aspect of the lunch program in the future and figure out some way that is a, a better way to make parents more aware, to allow parents to be more aware of what exactly, how it works in terms of what the choices are. Because it's really kind of a mystery, I think, to a lot of parents when their kid goes through the line, what does that, you know, 375 or 415 buy? And then, also educating the kids, because I think the kids, you know, don't understand what a portion is. You know, or what a, you know, like, I, I think that's part of nutrition, you know? It's like, you know, if you have three hamburgers, that's not very healthy, you know, um, portion size. Or, you know, is it for, depending on the size of the kid, you know, if it's seven feet tall, yeah, it's a little different. But, um, I don't know, it's just a part of the nutrition program that I think possibly is missing. And it's frustrating sometimes because then it's very, very expensive and beyond a lot of people's means, actually. So. There's an education piece there.
Ellen, really good points. I was, I was taking notes. So, charging practices is what I heard, you know, what, what are they? And do they still make sense? And then, then a broader picture, I think, from several board members as far as we have these great resources, right, in our nutrition departments. Forgot what we call it, but anyway, our chefs. And, and we seem, it seems like maybe we could utilize that somehow in a better way and, and help out in the broader effort. I mean, this is all happening so fast, so I'm hugely sympathetic to the administration that's executing on this. But we are heading to 20% unemployment, which is pretty ugly. And, and wonder if we should maybe be more, think more proactively about what some of these issues are. And, and food is, is really, food security is the ultimate issue, I think. And Frank, hold on a second, I see you. Carrie, did you want to say something because I saw your hand go up?
Frank's might have gone up first. But I, I did want to just clarify a couple of things. Ellen, thank you so much for those thoughts. In your first point, you mentioned a couple of things. And in terms of donating masks and, and gloves and wipes and those kinds of things, we too, as a district, very early on scoured across the district and made those donations to those in need as well. And so, I think across the township, every school district is, is really working hard to make sure that those donations are in place and have been made almost at times to detriment now because we need those masks. But they were of highest priority early on for our medical professionals and essential workers. So, those donations were made. We also made some donations of the unused food from cafeteria lunches that were left over. Those donations, that, that food was donated as well. So, and then the other thing is, we continue at every communication we push out to families to invite our community members to make donations either to the Angel Fund or to the Nutri-R Food Pantry. Both are critical elements of food sustenance for those in need throughout our community. We're very fortunate so far, we have not needed to decline anyone who has made a request through the Angel Fund. And so, we continue to communicate that out to families as well, that if they are in need to please make a request, they can do that directly through our Angel Fund Coordinator. All that information is online or through their principal. And the principal are, is able to hook them up with those who can provide those resources. I also just wanted to clarify that at this point, and I think Ellen, you're gonna touch on this maybe a little bit later, but at this point, the food program is not a break-even because we are paying our, our cooks and continue to do so as we should. But we don't have revenue sources coming in. So, while we're not buying food, we do continue to pay those employees and we're not seeing revenue to come, coming in to offset those costs. So, we do have to be careful about this, especially as a district, as many across the township. We don't participate in the National School Lunch Program, which is the source of funding for food and, and offsetting for those who might otherwise be eligible. And so, that is something that we need to just, just continue to really think about as we, as we go forward. The, the food pantry and other social service agencies are really well-positioned to help families. But we continue to provide for, for students and their families who may need food during, during remote learning. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a couple of those things that I heard, Ellen.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Carrie. And by the way, just, I'm sorry, I know other people raised their hands, but I wanted to let you know that I personally have sources for masks, people who make masks. And I'm happy if our District 39 teachers, administrators, anyone, you know, who is not protected is welcome to contact me and I will hook them up because our staff should be well-protected. So, if those masks were given away, then we should make sure that you guys are protected 100%.
So. Thank you.
Just let us know. So.
Thank you.
That happened.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, John. You're on mute, John.
Greg.
Okay, um, two two real quick ones, and one Carrie just mentioned that without the revenue coming in the the food program. While we pay the the cooks and other people probably is is not saving money, it's actually costing money. The the other one, Dom, and I don't know if this is the right place or or other is. Um, we gotta be, we gotta be careful that we don't have uh, um, scope creep. Um, you know, we're a school district and we have revenue comes in for the school district. And it made sense when there's an emergency and nobody had masks and we had masks, you know, that that we support the community. When we had food that that we couldn't use and we support the community, but to actually. Um, spend money to do things outside of our immediate scope, um, is something that we have to be careful about. Um, you know, again, encouraging people to donate money, you know, spending time working together as, you know, um, hands-on. Community efforts, but when we're starting to talk about money, we need to be careful. We're not talking about. Solving other problems that were not part of our scope as a school district and the revenue stream that comes in. As our scope of the school district.
Sorry, Lisa, did you raise your hand? No.
Uh, I was just concurring with Frank.
Okay, go ahead.
That we need to stay with our core mission. Um, and while there's just an unbelievable need. Um, our plates full.
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends personally. I believe it depends on on how you define our core mission. So um, I was thinking in terms of um, if we could. It almost like practice, social distancing and what that would look like in the um. In the lunchroom. You know, I mean, it would be good to do that before the school starts. And learn the lessons that need to be learned um, over the summer, maybe, then to learn them, you know, on the first day of school. So is there a way we could kind of meet all, yeah, meet more than one, one purpose? But anyway.
And I.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, and I just want to clarify, and obviously I get it, like Carrie said it and then Mark Frank said the. With the, um, you know, I'm not talking about spending tons of money. I said, reach out to the community.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Oh, yeah, no, Ellen, it's it's philosophical.
No, yeah, exactly. It's 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 just I wanted to make everyone aware of like a philosophical shift in terms of if this goes on long term. I think for our for our community, there's gonna be a big shift in terms of need. And that we might have to start really looking at that and talking to our community. District Thirty-nine, I think our kids might have a lot more need. Um, and possibly we might have to reach out to our community and say. What do you all think? You know, maybe, you know, can we come together? So I wasn't looking at a big, you know, saying, oh, we're gonna spend a bazillion dollars and do this, and I was more looking along a philosophical lines of. Um, like, I think Jo- I think John said it really well. It's a philosophical shift, so.
Okay, or Amy. Amy, just you want to say something?
Mine is very small and not COVID related at all, just back to your the question about fees. I I think this makes a lot of sense. I think um. You always do this, but I would just highlight the need to communicate. Where this came from. I think families would be incredibly supportive of understanding. Fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, that we've researched this and that, you know. We haven't raised the fees in multiple years and all the reasons that you supplied, I just would want to make sure. Go because otherwise it would seem like a funny time to be raising fees.
Yeah.
It's very uh, appropriate as and I would just encourage us to communicate the reasoning behind it.
I'll make sure to include that in the board package, yes.
Yeah, that's a good point. Just overall, I mean, so much work has been done on the nutrition side. Do we feel like we've we've um, communicated that well to the constituents?
I mean, I I think we we were doing a lot of surveying with the students during the year, so I think the students were aware of all the new um, menu items. Obviously, our year was cut short with the school closure and the lunches. Um, but I think when we wrap up with the the summary of the strategic plans, we'll make sure to highlight the nutrition changes as part of that plan.
Yeah. Okay.
It's probably not anybody's focus right now with since they're not in in school, right? But we can make sure to highlight it too when we come back as well.
Oh, okay, Carrie. Sorry, sorry, Erin, I see you, cause it's Carrie who wants to talk.
I I just, I wanted to add that if in fact the needs grow dramatically as as some worry about. It may be time for us to reconsider the National School Lunch Program. I will say that that comes with some added uh, responsibility and restrictions. We've been very fortunate to um, have. As not a member of that program, we have a lot of authority to design um, nutritional lunches as we see fit. And um, obviously anytime there's some federal funding coming for our program, there's some offset with that too, so. There are some pros and cons of becoming a participant in that program, and those are some things that we'll have to weigh very, very carefully if in fact. The need grows so substantially that we're not able to offset that ourselves with um, our own. Ca- ca- in the way that we have historically.
Erin.
Sorry, Erin.
Oh, no, you're fine. Um, so. An additional philosophical difference I think I would have, and maybe it isn't a difference, but um, I think issues of. Um, how much food and how much money a child is spending on their lunch is something that it needs to happen on the family level. And it's not something that should be led by the school. I think that if. A family doesn't understand the process and needs some clarification, then maybe that's something they could seek to um. Receive, but I know that my kids had different rules from me than other kids did. Over the years about how much food they could take and um. I wouldn't have wanted someone telling me my daughter couldn't have chocolate milk if it was being offered, or that my cunt, my son couldn't have two lunches when he was at High Crest, which I allowed. Because he was hungry, so that that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Ellen.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that the school regulate that. Um, what I was interested in is um, more clarity. In the way that the program communicates in general. Because um, you know, I've had three now go through and also Nutrior, and when you get to Nutrior, it's even more of a mystery. Um, but it's more in terms of it's really very difficult. Um, to know exactly what is going on. Um, it's not so transparent. Um, and I think a lot of parents don't understand what this different stations are in the cafeteria that. Where areas where you can buy extras and what is available to to kids and how they can track themselves. I just, all I was suggesting was that now that we have such a beautiful nutritious offer, you know, beautiful nutritious offerings. Um, it might be really nice for the parents to have the menus and the, you know, access to the menus. For the week and what costs what. So that, you know, maybe at the beginning of the week that parents can go through the menus with their kids. And so, you know, and talk to them about it, and I agree with you. I mean, nutrition is a family thing. It's absolutely a private thing. Um, but right now it's difficult. It's more difficult, I think, to access what's going on nutritionally, speaking. Uh, from the family standpoint, it's like all the kids go in and it's a free for all, like they. For the most part, it's and you can try to establish rules, but. A lot of kids don't, they just go in and they spend, they spend, and it's.
Yeah, I think I think, I I think Ellen, we understand. It's uh, charging practices, I think is, so I I was um, summarizing it. All right, shall we move on? Yeah, let's do it. All right, that was that was the easy part of the um, agenda. By the way, uh, next tentative budgets, which I will turn over to Ellen most likely.
Yeah, that's me.
All right.
So uh, first, I wanted to say, you know, start out and say many of the financial implications of COVID nineteen and the school closure unknown at this point. There's there's just a lot of unknowns, and we did do some work. We went back to look at what the impact was of the last recession in the two thousand seven to two thousand nine timeframe. To take a look at what the impact was on local and state funding to get an idea of what could be coming ahead um, in the next couple of years. Again, it's it's even with that, it's hard to say. Um, but as a result of the review, the fiscal year twenty-one um, operating balance in the tentative budget that we presented um, last month. Has been reduced by five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and this is mostly the result of changes to assumption in local and state funding. So I'm gonna run through the changes that we made to the budget first, and then um, I have a a not, then I want to get into a little more longer term on COVID nineteen and the implications. And what the different impact could be of some of the different changes, um, just to start getting an idea of what we could be looking at. Um, so basically on the uh, the changes since last tentative budget. We decreased the property tax revenue for tax collections um, and refunds by two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is a point five percent decrease in property tax revenue. Uh, we decreased the uh, CPPRT, the personal property replacement tax uh, by eleven percent, which was a decrease of forty-nine thousand dollars. Then we went in and decreased evidence-based funding revenue. We assumed we lose loss, excuse me, we assume we lost the extra amount over the base funding minimum, which has only been a few thousand dollars a year. And then we backed out twenty dollars per student for a reduction of seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, cause once you get back to the base funding minimum for tier three and tier four schools, they start backing out then after that on a per people basis. And then for mandated categoricals, we decreased the revenue by two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which assumed a payments of three quarters instead of four quarters of of of. The categoricals, and really it could be two payments. We don't, we don't know at this point, but we felt like that was a a realistic assumption that. Uh, we we don't think we're gonna get four at this point based on uh, our hearing, even though we don't know what the actual number will be. Um, so.
Do you mind if I?
Yeah.
Do at this point, so um. If you go over that again, so these are payments from the state. We think it's realistic that we're not gonna get all of them.
Right, we're not gonna get all four quarters, so we got payments for a lot of our previous categoricals are rolled into the evidence-based funding now.
Yeah.
But we still get around two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a quarter, which covers our transportation. As well as some special ed reimbursement. Those were items that were not rolled into evidence-based funding.
Okay.
Um, and when you go back and you look at historically, um, I I just think from what we're hearing from some webinars I've sat on with ISB and the school business officials. That it's it, the chance that we're gonna get four payments next year is pretty slim, I think.
Okay, so you're, you think we're gonna get two? Did I hear that right?
I I think we could get two or three this year and two or three next year.
Okay.
I mean, it's hard to say at this point, nobody really knows yet.
And in the past, did the did the state not do a true up payment? Or they just.
Well, so like last, eventually I think we we caught up, so like last year, for example, we got five payments, right? Cause the previous year we got three, and when you go back and you look historically, it's kind of all over the place. To.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so since we just walked through all the detailed pages of the budget, um, you'll you'll have that again, but I'm not gonna walk through all the pages. We did add um, page five into the budget, which is just a a more formal summary of the items we discussed. Last time as far as the changes from the fiscal year twenty budget to the fiscal year twenty-one budget in the educational fund, just to kind of document some of that detail. Um, but again, with the exception of the revenue changes that we just went through, um, there it was minimal changes to uh, what's in the tentative budget versus what we reviewed last month. So I I think really the the bigger impact is right, what's the longer term implications of the COVID nineteen gonna be? And so I think um, that's what I really want to walk through in more detail um, this month. And start to talk about that a little bit, even though there's a lot of unknowns. Um, so on the financial implication sheet, I've kind of highlighted some of the key areas that I think we need to be watching. Um, the first obviously is property tax revenue, because that's where the bulk of our revenue comes from. Uh, CPI for twenty-twenty is unknown at this point, and it will start to impact property taxes in fiscal year twenty-two, so it's not gonna impact next year's budget. Um, but it will have a uh, an impact in the future, and if CPI declines to point one percent, which is what the low was during the last recession. Uh, the property tax revenue would decrease by approximately one point one million dollars a year. And again, remember with the property taxes, it has a compounding effect, so even if it just goes down for that one year. And then kind of goes back up to where it's been at two percent, it still has a lasting effect on the district. Um, and then new property growth, again, I went look back to look at what happened uh, in the last recession. And currently our projections and our estimates are using sixteen million dollars of uh, new property growth. If we, if it decreased to seven million dollars, for example, which was the low in the last recession, that would have an effect of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars per year uh, on the revenue. And then there's other items that could negatively impact property tax revenue. Um, there could be a decrease decrease in collections. Uh, and an increase in refunds and last, looking at the recession last time, a one percent um, decrease um, is not unrealistic. It was in that neighborhood. They're also talking about a Cook County reassessment of property taxes and the impact of. That would mostly be an increase, the the potential impact of that would be an increase on appeals. Um, I've also, there's been talk about delaying of property taxes, which again wouldn't affect um, the taxes overall, but could affect the timing of our cash flows. Especially when we start to get our next big influx of cash flows. Um, I think we're okay at this point if they were to get delayed. Um, I know some of the other counties are talking about it a little more than Cook County at this point. But that's something we're watching as well, what the cash flow impact would be.
Yeah.
And that.
Can I slow you down on that part? So so we rely on the the payments um, that that comes in over the summer. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, July and August, that first payment, yeah.
So you think um, that we're we're gonna be okay in our spending? If we, if that payment is delayed?
Yeah, so I think if if it had like a one or two month delay, I think we would be fine. Um, if we start, and again, I'm not hearing right now that the Cook County taxes are gonna be delayed, and also it wouldn't be um, all taxes, cause also what I've heard is. I'm not sure what the percentage of property taxes are that are in escrow, but those payments would not be delayed. The district would still get those payments, those would be paid on time. So I don't know, it's it's not like all the property taxes would get delayed. Again, I don't have all the information at this point, but I wa- it's something that we're watching. Um, that we're gonna wanna stay on top of.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you're, this is great. Thank you.
Yep, and then also just the, you know, the impact of any potential property tax freezes um, in the future. Again, that's always kind of kind of ebbs and flows with when they're talking about that. Um, so that's kind of the big items that we need to keep an eye on for local property tax revenue. Um, and then there's also state revenue, uh, evidence-based funding, again, um, there's a potential for a possible reduction in that. I don't know what that would look like. It depends how much the, you know, state, the the education budget for. Um, and like we talked a little earlier, where the mandated categoricals, there's a potential delay. It's also a possibility that the state could decide to prorate them and not give the full quarterly payments that we have. Um, for right now, in the calculations I've done, I've assumed we get five quarters basically of payments between this year and next year. Right now, we've received two quarters of fiscal year twenty. It's possible we might not receive anymore, and we may receive the rest of them. I don't know. But that's the, based on what I'm hearing, is that, you know, five payments between the two years is, sounds pretty realistic. I I don't know, your guess isn't as good as mine, but. Um, and then also I went back and looked in two thousand and nine. Uh, the state revenue declined four percent just overall, our state revenue, and in two thousand ten, it declined another twenty-five percent. Before coming back up again to its regular levels, so just to give you an idea of what that would mean. Our state revenue in fiscal year nineteen was just under four million dollars. It was three point nine million dollars. So a twenty-five percent decline would be approximately nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, and then also always out there is the impact of any potential pension cost shifts. Again, I there's, I don't have any specifics on that, but that's something else we need to look out for. And then any impact on any future health insurance premiums and and that and the whole impact of COVID nineteen. Again, I don't have any specifics, but those are kind of the key. Key items I think we need to watch, and I think there'll be more as we figure out what next year is gonna look like. Um, you know, and what any social distancing is gonna require on the expenditure. You know, and what any social distancing is going to require on the expenditure side. I think that's even more unknown at this point than, than even these revenue assumptions.
So I wanted to make sure I'm reading this right. So I'm looking at exhibit A and exhibit B. Right? What-if scenario?
Yeah.
Right thing. So we're saying, so, so based on, on all these factors, right, that you've gone through, that our fund balance could go down by 6 million because of, of these factors, because you, and you looked at the prior experience and baked it in, right, all these assumptions?
Yeah. And I will just say that, so in that top exhibit, exhibit A, basically what I did was I took what, where we think we're going to end up fiscal year 20, or realistic estimate in our budget. I think we're probably going to end the year with around $2.1 million more in our fund balance. Most, half of that is due to the $1 million issuance of the bonds over budget. And then there's the impact of the COVID-19 and savings and some savings versus budget. So basically, I laid that in. And so yes, at the end of fiscal year 25, in that scenario with no other COVID-19 implications for fiscal year 22 and beyond, we're projecting to be at the 41% or that 29 million. And then the exhibit B, the what-if scenario, again, you could run all different kinds of scenarios. I just wanted to plug in, yes, some numbers. And, and I think the impact of CPI, I mean, I think CPI is going to be pretty low for this year. I think, I don't know if it's going to be 0.1, but I don't think it's going to be 2, you know?
Right, right.
And so yes, and I plugged, I plugged in those other assumptions, which was like a one-year decline in state revenue, a one-year decline in the new property growth. And then the biggest impact really is if CPI and property taxes go down because that continues to compound every year. And that would bring the fund balance down to 23.3 million at fiscal year 25, which would bring us down to the 33%. So that's where it would bring it down to 6 million.
Okay. I, I mean, it seems like a really reasonable way to approach this at this point, this kind of planning. Erin, did you want to say something?
I did. So, you know, I'm thinking a couple of things here. One is, in the not-so-distant past, the board's goal was to have it at 30%. And then they went up to 40, which I think in, you know, retrospect was a brilliant idea with what we're looking at here. So I guess I, wondering, do we have any sense going past fiscal year 25? Is it going to keep going down? Because it's going from 34 to 33. Is it going to sort of level off there in the mid 30s? Or is it going to go down, is it potentially going to dip down below 30%? Or do we just not know?
I think there's way too many unknowns at this point. I would say that first of all, just as a, just kind of to bring us back to last year when we had the discussions, the reason that we increased it from 30% to 40% was to give us a buffer for unknowns. So typically, prior to that, we had baked in things like pension cost shift. And we had said, let's assume X percentage. And we put that into the projections. Then the board made a shift and we said, let's increase the, the minimum from 30% to 40%. We won't put in specific assumptions like pension cost shift into the projections, but we'll know that 10% is there. So I think the 10% is a buffer. When we looked at the calculations with a typical year and the timing of the cash flows, we feel like 30% is the minimum to be able to cover our pay, our payments from the high property taxes as it kind of goes down to the low part. So I do think we have some cushion there. So it's, it's not so scary to be in the 30% range. I think there's a lot of things that could impact us. I, I, I don't even know what the next, I don't even know what next year is really going to look like, much less than fiscal year 25, but there's a lot of decisions, points along the way, right? The board can look at expenditures based on, you know, funding and, and make different decisions that maybe would have made, et cetera.
Yeah, that's a great question, Erin. And it's a really good effort here, Ellen. Appreciate it. Stuff's hard to do. And maybe if you could talk to some of the flexibility that is baked into our budget, that might be helpful as far as construction projects and timing.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the biggest, I think the biggest thing on the horizon, the biggest dollars and that's coming up soon is probably the Ramona and McKenzie kindergarten enrichment. Some of the items that are in our budget for next year are already underway for the summer, the Central and the Harper and the Highcrest construction. So we're kind of already, you know, kind of moving along with those. The Ramona and McKenzie, I think that is something that if you, if everything was normal and we were continuing along with our current plan, we had talked about starting that construction in around March of 2021 to finish for the fall of 2021. So I think, and that, you know, that's a big chunk, chunk of money there. So that would be the, the biggest thing we would probably want to take a look at from the capital projects, timing.
Can you just remind us what that dollar amount is roughly?
Yes, I can. Hold on one second.
Well, in the meantime.
Sorry, I got holders on my floor. Got it. So we have, in, in the fiscal year 21 budget, I have 3.6 million, but that is only 2/3 of the project for Ramona and McKenzie. So if I take that and I divide it by, we're talking around 5.5 million, 5.6 million overall for those two projects. Those are ones, and the rest of the stuff that we have in the fiscal year 21 budget. You know, also coming up in the, in the, in the summer of next year, we had talked about air conditioning at the junior high on the second floor. That's another big item. Those, those are the, the big areas, I would say, for capital projects.
So, so before, before.
How much is that project?
Um, again, sorry.
That's good. No, I think we, none of us even want to talk about delaying Ramona and McKenzie, right? Can we all say yes? No way. We really want to go for Ramona and McKenzie? Hold on, Frank. Bear with me. How, how late can we make that decision to move forward or not move forward on Ramona and McKenzie?
And so we had originally started talking, wanting to talk about what the designs might look like and what the district's needs might look like in May. We haven't really had any internal discussions since we had them initially. So I, I think we would need to kind of take a look at that internally and with our construction team to talk about what a timeline might look like and what we would be thinking about. We haven't had Luke back to start focusing on that yet.
Okay.
Again, I'll reiterate that that is dependent on our evaluation of the first phase of kindergarten enrichment, which at this point, we're, we're really excited to be offering it next year, but we know next school year is going to be potentially an unusual year. And so we'll have to weigh our evaluation there as we, as we proceed. So there's a lot for us to think about in terms of kindergarten enrichment as well as the construction that's currently proposed.
Okay. Okay. So I think Frank is, was waiting. Go ahead, Frank.
Okay. I had a couple little ones. One, when we were doing the, the reserve levels, I think we, as Ellen pointed out, it was somewhere between 30 and 35% for a good buffer on cash flow. So, you know, that's the point, but when we get into the 30s, then we start having to at least bring up the issue of, of watching cash flows. I had one small point, our question. I know we, we have a historically pretty high collection rate, like 99% of taxes, whatever. Did, is that one of the, the adjustments to, for this environment that that collection rate might go down?
Yeah. So I mean, it looked like it dropped at, for one of the years back in the 2000, 2000, 2007, 2008 timeframe, it did drop a percentage point for one of the years and then came back up again. Again, that's kind of a combination of collections slash refunds.
Okay. And then back to the Ramona and McKenzie. The, the thing, when we talked about it before, is that there is this one-year period where it makes sense because we had to divide things up, that, you know, two schools had kindergarten enrichment and two would come, would, would have to wait. In order to have a viable discussion on the budgets, we need to have, before we need to have that financial discussion, we need to have, at least understand what the option would be for having McKenzie and Ramona have some kindergarten enrichment, even if we didn't do construction. Otherwise, we're just into the, we're going to spend this money or we're not. And those two schools still would be held out. I mean, we have to have a viable plan for discussion purposes of
Yes.
how we would, at least, you know, if not totally balanced, at least mitigate the impact for the schools that just couldn't be built all at once. And then one minor detail related to that. We've always, for very, very good reasons, looked at Ramon and McKenzie as a pair, just like we looked at Central and Harper. But I think it's Ramona. The costs were more reshuffling space than, as opposed to construction. So if we ever had to get to the discussion of what budgets and how do we spread things out? And do we do everything in one year or we shift things? We may, we need to consider the potential breaking those apart. I know it's more complicated. If we get to that point, that should be one of the discussion points also.
Yeah. Super helpful, Frank. Thank you. I think Ellen had her hand up first.
Um, yeah, a lot in agreement with what Frank just said. I was going to say on top of that, the conversation, if we were to put off the Ramona and McKenzie constructions, very much agree that we'd have to completely rethink the kindergarten enrichment program and how it is offered next, how it's offered in the following year then, to make it equitable across the district so that it's offered equally in some sort of, I hate to say the word because I know it caused a lot of issues last time, but the lottery word. But yeah, I mean, it's, it can't continue to, we can't continue to only offer it to half the district and not the rest of the district. There's just too many people who really, probably even were so that have.
Now, Ellen, you, I'm sure everyone agrees with you. Like, Erin, we agree with you. Erin, you've been waiting patiently.
Um, thank you. I don't know if this is something we have any sense of seeing actual numbers on yet, but I'm thinking there could be a lot of economic reasons why a family who, you know, three months ago thought that they wanted to be in the kindergarten enrichment program now has changed their mind for various reasons. Maybe they have a parent home that they weren't going to have home before because of unemployment or just it's going to cost too much. And I wonder what the demand is going to look like. And that's probably going to change too. So I don't know if we have a sense of whether people are pulling out or whether enrollment has stayed steady, but I think that could change. Also, you know, if we're going to have, if we're going to have e-learning on, in the fall, someone might change their mind. So I think the next year is going to really be up in the air as far as what the demand is going to look like.
Good point. Lisa?
Um, so I just think we have to, I, I know this causes anxiety and we want to know kind of what we're going to do. And I think we have to be uncomfortable in the space that we're just not going to know for a while. And I don't want to set the alarm bells off in the community that we are or aren't going to do anything because we don't know. So my suggestion is that Ellen comes back with kind of, you know, at what points in the process are our decision-making points and what decisions we have to make? Because all these points are fabulous, but, but really, all we're doing is highlighting what we don't know. Ellen, does that sound like something, or Carrie, does that sound like something we could do?
Absolutely. I think coming back with some dates specific by which time we need to make decisions is probably the best and most useful next step for us to take. Otherwise, I, I agree with you, Lisa. We, we start to say, well, what if this, what if this? And there, there are just simply too many unknowns to predict some of that. But it is incredibly useful to know by which date do we expect to be making decisions about construction for the following year and, and then knowing what, what follows from there.
All right. Thank you, guys. So Ellen, did you want to say more about?
I think Mark had his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Mark.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify. So definitely what we just said about capital, are there, are there other places that we would cut costs that, that we, you know, would also want to put dates in for and sort of fold into the process that you just spoke about? And if so, I would definitely recommend doing that.
I think we'll have to take a, we have to go back and take a look at that.
Okay. All right. So I say we move to the Wixi budget.
This one should be easy.
Yeah.
Basically, we, as you know, we continue to serve as a fiscal agent for Wixi, which is the co-op that includes District 39 and Evoqua schools. And we basically follow the same budget guidelines from ISB that we do for District 39. Beginning in fiscal year 20 this year, the grant funds for IDA began flowing directly to districts. So there's really not too much left in this co-op. There's just a couple of entries which include an allocation for the special ed director, the audit costs and a small funding from evidence-based funding. So this budget summary reflects the activity and we will just follow along with Wixi on the same budget calendar and approval timeline as District 39.
Thank you, Ellen.
I think Frank had a question.
Oh, Frank.
Just, just one real quick one. And again, not to get into the weeds of contingencies, but if, for whatever reason, Evoqua, I know going into this, was starting to have financial problems. And we've done a nice job. We're solid and we're looking at contingencies along the edge. But if Evoqua had some more deep problems, is there any risk if they pulled out? Does that change our cost structure or, or does that have any implications at all?
I think basically the students that we have in the district for tuition that are, we're billing Evoqua for, we staff accordingly. So I think if we were to have less students, we would adjust our staff for the following year as required and shift them around. So I, pretty much.
And the same thing, some of our staff members who we share as well. Some of our staff member, we share, members we share and we do that staff planning annually and that, that feeds the budget as well.
Great. Thank you. Ellen?
That was just my question. It, did, is there a, any sense yet? I, I can't remember when that happens. Was there an increase or decrease in the staff anticipated or in this?
So I believe there's a little bit of a decrease in what Evoqua was requesting for next year. In, I think it was a speech position and it was like a 0.3 or a 0.4 position. I don't have it in front of me that they're not looking for from us for next year. That was the main change in the fee for services that we actually bill them for our staff going there. I don't know exactly what the, how many students will be coming next year, off the top of my head.
Do we keep the speech person though, or do we decrease speech in our district then? I know it's always awkward when they're.
Yeah, I think we consider that one of our staff and we shuffle around based on our needs. So I don't know specifically. And it can change year to year, I think, who's over there supporting Evoqua. So again, we just look at that as part of our personnel and staff and plan.
Thanks, Ellen.
Great. All right. Thank you. So let's move on. Thank you so much, Ellen. It's great presentation. Appreciate it. And it looks like we have budget resolutions, which I think goes back to you.
Yep. So basically, we have two resolutions that we'll be bringing for the May board meeting for the approval, which are ones we've approved the last several years. But just as a reminder, the first resolution follows the ISB regulations that provide for transferring funds pledged to pay for capital projects from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund. And what that does is it elects us, track those construction costs and capital projects and eliminate fluctuations in the operations and maintenance fund due to these one-time projects for large dollar amounts. So for right now, this resolution allows us to use the capital projects fund to pay for construction costs of the $7.5 million that we have in the budget. Just as a reminder, some of those are approved already, like Harper and Central and Highcrest. And there's others that are included in the number that are not approved yet. And obviously, we wouldn't go through with them until the board approves any actual bid approvals that we decide to do. And then the other item, other resolution is a short-term inter-fund loan from the educational fund to operations and maintenance. from the Educational Fund to Operations and Maintenance Fund. And again, that just permits timely payment of construction-related expenses and recognizes that we receive the property tax levy revenue at two points during the school year and just helps us with managing of cash flow timing. The resolution indicates the loan would not exceed 2.5 million and it would be repaid in the current fiscal year. It's our standard practice to approve the inter-fund loan annually because it's hard to predict the exact amount of monthly levy receipts and the construction invoices. And while we do this annually, we usually don't need to use it. We just can't spend more than we actually have in a fund. And so we put this resolution on file. Questions on those?
Thank you. Seeing none, shall we move to the Transportation Contract Amendments?
Yes. So here, we continue to discuss a Transportation Contract Amendment with North Shore Transit. After we had the committee of the whole meeting last month, North Shore Transit determined it would be more beneficial for their bus drivers to go on unemployment, effective May 1st. So they continue to ask all districts to pay 80% of normal costs through April 30th, when everybody was on staff, and then 37% of normal costs from May 1st through June 11th, which nets out the bus drivers that are actually on unemployment. Per the terms of our construction contract, the district is not required to make any payments when routes are not run. However, the district has an interest in ensuring our drivers continue to be paid, both in accordance with the board's direction issued in March when school first closed and in order to make sure we have bus drivers and buses available when school returns to in-person instruction. Now that the bus drivers are going on unemployment, if the district were to continue to pay salaries and benefits, that would mean we would pay 60% of the costs from March 17th through April 30th and 17% of the costs from May 1st through June 11th. This equates to a $74,000 difference between what North Shore Transit is requesting and what the district would offer, given our previous discussions. North Shore Transit feels that in the interest of transparency between the districts, they do not want to negotiate on the 80%, 37% request. However, they would be willing to decrease our contractual increases in fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, to acknowledge the amount the board is interested in paying. If North Shore Transit agrees to the offset of the contractual increase in fiscal year 21 and 22, that equates to the $74,000, we could refund parents 21% of their transportation fees and still end up with a savings of $100,000 in the transportation budget. So at this point, we'd like some direction from the board on whether you'd be willing to approve a contract amendment if we can kind of get all those terms nailed down for the board meeting.
Yeah, I don't, okay, I know we're all, hopefully maybe have opinions about this, but I feel like we've, mission accomplished. We took care of our drivers and we want to. That was the agreed-upon thing to do. Beyond that, I feel like if we give you more direction, that we're micromanaging you. So I'm on the side of, it sounds like it's going where it needs to go. Any other thoughts besides my thought on the board? Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, so I don't disagree with you, John. I just want to make sure that we are communicating it in a way that is really clear as to what we're doing. And specifically, and it may, I just may have heard something wrong or something. But if bus drivers are going on unemployment, we have to explain how it is that we are making sure that we're getting them paid. Those sound like two different things. So I just want to make sure that the communications when we, when we explain it at the board meeting are really clear about what we are doing and how we are accomplishing it with whatever agreement we come to.
And I'm also still working on, I'm hoping to have something at the board meeting. Sorry.
Ellen, you're breaking up.
No, hey, we're not, I'm not.
Can you repeat the end of that?
Yeah, we're all breaking up a little bit. Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, so I don't, yes, we will, we will make sure. I'm waiting to finish, kind of finishing up the negotiations with North Shore Transit and would hope to have something for approval at the board meeting. And we could make clear exactly what it is that we're paying for and making sure the drivers are still getting paid.
Okay.
To be clear, there is a contract that the board will need to approve. There is a contract the board will need to approve at the next board meeting in order for us to pursue.
Yep. Yeah, we must be having internet issues or something. Frank, did you want to say something?
Yeah, two, one, one kind of high, one high-level question and one comment. So if the bus drivers are being paid for this period, and I understand with the way the money's being distributed, they make more money actually being unemployed than they do being paid directly by the school, by the bus company. So the money that we're paying then would be for paying the administrative staff and the, to keep their doors open? So I'm not sure why we're paying anything theoretically, I understand. Okay, so just to be clear, the money we're paying is actually then keep the bus company alive, not the employees. Because the employees are being kept alive with the unemployment benefits. The second part is I do think, and while I agree, I think there's, I think the board's supposed to say something specifically about the refunding part. I think doesn't that have to be like a board decision to refund money to the parents? I'm in agreement of it, I'm just saying from a statistical standpoint.
The board action that's necessary is the action on the contract. So when we bring forward a contract at the regular board meeting for approval by the board, that is the action that's required. And then we will follow up with the parent refunds after that.
Okay, but before we did parent refunds, the board would have to say yes. Again, I'm not saying that we'd say no, but that's something that the board has to approve.
The board has to approve the contract with the transportation company. No, the board has to approve the contract with the transportation company.
Okay.
Okay, Lisa.
Yeah, I do want to say, so it looks like we're proposing a 21% rebate. Yeah. Can you guys hear me? No? We're losing our connectivity. Okay. I don't know. Got it. So I don't know exactly how much, what percentage of the school year has been remote learning. But if you assume, you know, a 20, how much Ellen?
It's around 31%.
Okay, so. It's not too bad, getting a 21% rebate on the transportation, given we're missing 31% of school, right? So I, I feel like this might be a win-win here, that parents get a decent chunk of change back and we're keeping the bus company viable, helping at least.
And keep in mind, we did continue to pay the bus, the bus drivers did continue to get paid through the end of April. So the time at which they went on to unemployment is subsequent to that.
Good, all right, good. It seems like a good resolution, guys, thank you. All right, I am going.
Sorry, John, go ahead.
No, I was gonna end it and give it back to you.
So just, so folks know, I think we're going to get through the rest of the agenda items, then take a five-minute break and then reconvene for executive session. So just if people need to know that.
Thank you.
Yes, so let's move on to old business. Is there any old business? Any new business? Dr. Krimis Gole, there's a list. I'll get everybody, John and Mark.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that the final calendar has been shared with family for the school year. That calendar includes a special day of remote learning on Monday, June 8th. And the last day of school this year for students will be Tuesday, June 9th. That day will include some organized pickup of supplies for our kindergarten through fourth grade students. It looks like probably yearbook distribution and final pickup and drop-off of supplies for fifth through seventh grade students and graduation for our eighth grade students. We have some unique and special plans in the works for graduation on that Tuesday, June 9th. Lisa Schneider Fabs, as board president, will join us at that ceremony, but for social distancing purposes. Others will not. Additional information will be coming to the board regarding that event. And then our teachers will continue to work on Wednesday and Thursday, June 10th and 11th. As we all know, there is much planning to do to finish this school year and then to plan for the upcoming school year in light of remote learning. And so the 10th and the 11th will give teachers and our administrators the opportunity to recalibrate curriculum, to meet as grade-level teams, to plan for the upcoming school year, to start some transition planning as well. June 12th will be the last day of school access for staff to close out all the buildings and make sure that we are prepared for the summer months and what lies ahead there. And I expect to, pending state guidance, I expect to bring forward the final school calendar for board approval. I would love to, at the May meeting, we may need to wait till the June meeting. I have to verify that with the state board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John?
Yeah. Are, is there, what's the plan? Or is there a plan to evaluate or at least communicate to us how remote learning is impacting the students?
So we had that update for the board at the last board meeting. At the end of the school year, again, we'll be having those meetings with teachers to reevaluate kind of where we're at and what adjustments we need to make to curriculum and instruction moving forward for the fall. I suspect after those meetings occur, as we get to the June board meeting, we'll have another update for the board about those adjustments. Keep in mind that standardized testing was not done this fall due to remote learning. And so much of the quantitative data there would not be available until next year or whenever we can resume. However, we do have some information that we can gather through a number of other sources.
Okay, thanks.
Mark, you had something?
Yes, and this is truly in the spirit of new business. This is, you know, raising questions that we, I would not expect we'll have answers for, for, you know, several more meetings in the future. Nonetheless, I am starting to think about and concerned about how we make decisions about reopening schools and closing them again and reopening them again and whatever it is. And so things that are on my mind are things like, you know, are we, so Dr. Krimis Gole sent out the governor's criteria for various phases and how things would open. And so we have questions in front of us, it seems to me, like, are we simply going to open schools when the governor says we can open schools? Are we going to make other, you know, decisions that are local decisions? Will we have our own sister, systems of monitoring, you know, what kind of impact COVID may be having in our schools? Will we have things like, some companies are doing, you know, temperature scans for every person who comes in the building? And we've talked a little bit about wastewater scanning and whatnot. So again, all in the spirit of future questions, because we got a lot to get done before the end of the school year. But I wanted to sort of bring it up now so that we're starting to have those thoughts to Germany.
Other new business? Okay, two really, a couple really good points, which I'm sure we'll get on the agenda. Now it is time for a public comment. The district has requested that public comments be emailed to publiccomments@willmet39.org. Have we received any public comments via email, Tony?
There are no public comments.
May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiations?
Second.
Frank, I'm going to assume that you moved.
I moved to adjourn the executive session to discuss negotiations.
Frank, and John, I got your second. Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Judges are ready.
John, you're on mute.
Yes, here.
Frank Fandzika?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternweiler?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs?
Yes. Okay, everyone, I will see you in the breakout room in five minutes. Thank you.
And I'm going to start assigning people. This is Tony, start assigning you to the breakout room.
Great, thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. Ellen Crispino, you're in the breakout room, or going to be. Heather, I assume you as well?
Yes, I think I need to be there as well.
Okay, and Heather, you're in a yes. Kristen, are you a yes?
I think so, because I'm part of negotiations.
Okay, and then I think Katie and I are a no, unless Katie, are you in there?
I am not.
Okay, I'm going to assign everyone else and leave the regular meeting open.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Frank, and you can begin.
Okay, having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn this committee of the whole.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Motion carries by general consent and the time is 9:46. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everybody. Take care.